December 17 will come to order. Would request all in attendance turn off or silence your electronic devices, and if you would please stand to honor God and country. Father God, many of us understand you are in the business of doing big things in small places. We think of a small place like Bethlehem compared to the more prominent Jerusalem. I pray that each and every one of us is available for the big things you have planned for our small city of Temple Terrace. May we intentionally extend kindness and love one to another. We pray for the toy drive being orchestrated by our police department and city employees. May citizens join in the remaining three days of this event to brighten the holiday of a child in need. May we, each of us, serve as your vehicle for works and results to be accomplished for our good, and ultimately, Father God, for your glory. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Persons wishing to be heard on items that are not on the agenda, there are forms available in the back of the room that may be turned into the clerk to your right. And this evening, if Mr. Richard Schmidt would please approach the podium. Good evening. Mr. Schmidt, it is an honor to recognize your more than ten years of service to the city as you served on the municipal code enforcement board, serving a span from January 5th, 2010 through December 6th of this year. The certificate reads, "In recognition of outstanding service to the citizens of Temple Terrace for your devoted ten years of service on the Temple Terrace Municipal Code Enforcement Board." And we'd like to present this certificate to you. And Andy, would you please join me with Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you.
I would. Imagine that. First of all, good evening, Madam Mayor, council members and staff, and especially Tom Barone over there, who has made the job my last two years of the ten years quite interesting. We work together quite well, and what I, and as we did with the council. So what I would like to say, though, is besides thank you, is that if there are citizens in the community that are interested in serving on a board such as the code enforcement board, that it's easy to get on. It's harder to get off, but you can, you can fill out an application with the city clerk's office. It's, it's, it's an important job, and it is kind of like a court. It really is. And because you're hearing cases, and you as a, as a member or the chair have to determine guilt or innocence, and it's not a board where we're out trying to fine people. What we're trying to do is help the city, and because the city is, is a unit of codes, and if the codes are, are met and kept, or you come into code, no fine is assessed. So to any of, anyone that's out there that feels that when they, the encodment, code enforcement officer comes to their house and, and says that, "Well, you've got something that is a violation." Okay. You have time to fix it. They, they allow you to have some time to fix it, and they will, if you talk to the code officer, they will work with you. You just need to put on a positive attitude. We're trying to make the city, keep the city beautiful in what it is, and keep every, things uniform. And the easiest way to do it is keep at it. We all have to do it. And with that, I'll close. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And at this time, I would ask Chief Albano to please approach the podium. Several years ago, the Temple Terrace Police Department brought a toy drive to the city that all of our city employees have now adopted. And at this time of year, with an opportunity to share both, both kindness and encouragement, wanted to provide, Chief, the opportunity to overview what the toy drive is, and we know several of our citizens at this time of year are looking for opportunities to make a difference, and especially to make the difference in the life of a child. So Chief?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the city council. Can Albano, your police chief? In 2014, actually, Sarah Sims, a fellow employee here at the City of Temple Terrace, came to me and asked if the police department would partner, or reconsider partnering, with Potter's House Community Development to separate 501(c)(3) established by her pastor, Dr. Patricia Hauser, if we would, if we would participate in that fundraising and that gift giving for the kids. Now, their church is just outside Temple Terrace, out on Harney Road. But when I listened to Sarah, it became clear to me that this had been established for a while, that they were reaching out to the kids in the community, in Temple Terrace and surrounding community of Temple Terrace. So I, I thought it'd be, it'd be a good thing to get involved with. I can tell you, I've had the opportunity on a couple of occasions to meet personally with Pastor Hauser. I'm sorry, I have some invisible lines in my, in my teeth, so I can't speak as, as well as I usually do. But the bottom line is, this is a tremendous, tremendous effort that they have done and continue to do. We were involved in 2014, but this was actually established back in 2001, and has just continued to grow. And because of the willingness of our city manager, it started off in 2014, it's the police department trying to do what we could to help. We were involved in, in other toy-raising efforts, and what we, what we discovered was a lot of those toys were going farther abroad and really didn't come close to Temple Terrace. So this gave us an opportunity to not only assist in toy, toys for kids for Christmas, but it also brought it home to Temple Terrace and our surrounding communities. City manager allowed us to expand that a couple of years ago. So now there's a toy box on every floor in, in City Hall, and I believe in, in other city buildings as well. So it's a great worthwhile endeavor if you can find it in your heart to, to give a toy to a child that may otherwise not have a toy for Christmas. There is still time. The 17th is the final day of the toy drive, so you still have time, as, as the mayor said. So God bless you, and hopefully help us bless the lives of kids this Christmas.
are interested in giving a little bit of joy to a child, we have till the end of this week to contribute, and you can drop toys off right at City Hall. Very good. Chief, we want you to stay right there, and council has some things they want to present So thank you all, and thank you, Chief, for what you do. to you today for the toy drive.
Oh, nice.
So if we will stay where we are, we will, we'll come down to you. Board appointments. The Board of Adjustment has two regular membership appointment vacancies, June Mansfield and Dan LaFarge.
Want me to get the box?
Terms have expired and both have reapplied and are eligible to serve another term on the Board of Adjustment. Would ask for a motion to approve the appointment of June and Dan for terms extending from
You're gonna load me down?
December 17, 2019 until December 17, 2022.
Chief, can I get you to step forward a little bit?
Sure.
Do we have a motion?
Oh, there you go.
So move.
Second.
There you go.
We have a motion and a second.
For being sports.
Any discussion, council? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye. Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Next, the Riverwatch Task Force and alternate member appointment. There is one vacancy for an alternate member on the Riverwatch Task Force. The sole applicant is George Resch. Would entertain a motion to approve the appointment of George Resch for a term extending from December 17, 2019 until December 17, 2022. Is there a motion?
Move to appoint George Resch as an alternate member of the Riverwatch Task Force.
Thank you, Councilman Ross. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Council, if the minutes of the December 3rd, 2019 city council meeting are acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve those minutes?
I move to approve the December 3rd city council minutes.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Minutes stand approved. Persons wishing to be heard on items that are not on the agenda, a three-minute time limit will be imposed on all comments from the public. As speakers come to the podium, please state your name and your city of residence. During public comment on items that are not on the agenda, the city manager and directors in attendance do make note of these items that are related to city business and will follow up. First citizen speaker this evening is David Pegorlich.
Thank you, David Pegorlich, City of Temple Terrace. Thank you, council and staff, and Madam Mayor. Couple of meetings ago, I left here relieved, as the majority of council had indicated that they were not interested in constructing a bridge across the Hillsborough River that was associated with one of the trail projects on the half-cent sales type, of sales tax, transportation tax list. The last meeting, I left a little confused, because the council approved every single project on the half-cent transportation tax, one of which includes constructing a bridge across the Hillsborough River. So I'm here tonight to ask you all for three things. One is that my comments here tonight be indicated verbatim in the meeting minutes. Secondly, that you accept this petition against building a bridge across the Hillsborough River signed by over 200 individual Temple Terrace residents. If I could put this into record, does that, who do I hand it to? Thank you. And lastly, that you consider either removing the particular project that includes the bridge, or modifying it so that it clearly indicates that no bridge will be built. Thank you.
Next is Vilma Almeida Cruz.
Good evening. My name is Vilma Almeida. I'm a resident of, of the City of Temple Terrace, and I have a big problem. I have a neighbor that is making fire all night, all day, and the smoke is getting inside my house. I have a disabled kid, and his, our surroundings is full of smoke, because every single day he is burning wood, plastic bags, and everything. So I'm just trying to find somebody to help me deal with this problem that is affecting our health and our environment around the house. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. Okay. Mr. Ritter.
Jack Ritter, Temple Terrace, 74 years as of the 15th of this month. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I have a question. Does your administrator establish a staff standard for responding to verbal, written, to include emails submitted to the manager and the executive staff? What is this timeframe? 24 hours, 48, 72, or whenever we get to it? In short, I've addressed an email to the city manager on the fourth day of December, resent it on the seventh day, or seven days later, have not received even an interim response, not even a phone call. Am I PNG on the second floor of this building? Don't know. Doesn't bother me. I certainly hope that you people understand what the citizens need in response from this staff. Hopefully, you'll take action. I've taken all I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. Is there anyone else that would like to address council this evening? Seeing none, we will move forward. On the consent agenda, there are two items. City Manager Stevenson will explain. Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's two items on consent this evening. The first item is 7A, which is a resolution approving the purchase of a 2020 fire inspector vehicle from Duval Ford. That is being purchased under the Florida Sheriff's Association contract, FSA 19-vel-27.0. It costs $23,905, along with some ancillary equipment from Communications International in an amount not to exceed $500 that's necessary to outfit and equip the vehicle. The second item on consent is item 7B, which is a resolution approving the purchase of a bronze super chief rescue unit that is currently in this year's physical budget. The, the purchase will be made on a 2020 Freightliner chassis from 10-8 Fire Equipment using Florida Association's bid, FSA 18-VEH 13.0, in the amount of $341,260, and also include the purchase of a Ward No Smoke Direct Source Capture Diesel Remover, Removal System in the amount of $8,739.06. Total expenditure for this item is 399,999.06 to be provided from budgeted funds from Staff recommends approval of consent. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Stevenson. Are there any members of the public that would like to address council on these items?
I'm sure it was just an error in his speaking, but the numbers that he quoted don't match what's in the, the math doesn't work. If you add 341,260 to 8,739, you don't get 399,000, unless there's an item missing.
It's 349. 349. 349. Thank you, David. I apologize. It's 34, 349, 999.06, zero six. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reason I hesitated, I had 3 million. I put an extra nine in there.
We're not gonna approve.
Apologize.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to address council on this item? Very good. If the consent agenda is acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
To approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Next, a second public hearing and second reading of ordinance 1485 to adopt 2019-2020 Capital Improvement Section CIS Schedule of Projects update. Public hearing is now open. Diego Guerra of Hillsborough County Planning Commission will give a brief review.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Diego Guerra, Planning Commission staff. On December 3rd, I presented the first reading to the Temple Terrace FY '20 through FY '24 Capital Improvement Section Schedule of Projects update. As of that time, till now, there are no updates to the cap, the section, the schedule of projects, and the Planning Commission recommends adoption.
Are there any members of the public that would like to address council on this item? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Council, questions? Seeing none, if the clerk would please read title of ordinance 1485.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, providing for the annual modification and update to the capital improvement section of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan of the City of Temple Terrace pursuant to Chapter 163 Florida statutes by modifying and updating the five-year capital improvement schedule of projects for fiscal year 2019 through 2020, through fiscal year 2023 to 2024, and incorporating the 10-year long-term improvements for the multimodal transportation district for 2020 through 2029 into the schedule of projects, adopted by reference per the Comprehensive Plan Cap Policy 15.13, Hillsborough County Metropolitan Planning Organization's MPO Transportation Improvement Program, Hillsborough Area Regional Transits Development Plan, and Hillsborough County Public Schools Facilities Work Program, providing severability and effective date in repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
Would entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance adopting the 2019-2020 Capital Improvement Section CIS Schedule of Projects.
I move to approve the acceptance of the second reading.
Thank you. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Next, a first public hearing and first reading of ordinance 1486, approving the Comprehensive Plan Amendment for property located at 11407 North 52nd Street, CPA 19-01. The public hearing is now open. Mark Hudson, Executive Planner, Hillsborough County City, or Hillsborough County Planning Commission will explain.
Thank you. Good evening. Mark Hudson, Planning Commission staff. This is going to be a little bit of deja vu for the council members. I presented this plan amendment to you back on August 6th. At that time, the council voted to deny the, the application. However, since that time, you've taken action on the corresponding zoning, and I've been requested to come back and present this plan amendment to you for a second time for your consideration. My presentation on this has only been updated modestly, so I will go through that rather quickly to allow time for discussion. Again, this is Temple Terrace Futuralanious Map Amendment, TT CPA 1901. This is the first of two hearings. The second hearing is scheduled for January 7th, at which time you'll also have the opportunity to see the, the corresponding zoning and make a determination with both of those items in place as a unified package.
We have a perfect record with our clerk. Hundred percent.
We, we ran this at four o'clock, and it worked, so I'm not quite sure what happened. But anyway, this shows you the general location of Temple Terrace, CPA 1901. It's only a few blocks from City Hall on 52nd Street, very near Fowler Avenue, just a quarter mile to the south. And this is the aerial of, of the site, surrounded by the lavender dash line. I think the council is aware of its location, just south of the Publix that is currently being redeveloped. Across the street is the City of Tampa. 52nd Street is the dividing line between Temple Terrace and Tampa, and you can see that by the dash blue line. So by way of a little bit of background, this was privately initiated. It's small scale, so it only, it does not require trans, a transmittal public hearing to the Department of Economic Opportunity. Comes in at only 1.72 acres. The applicant wants to change this land use from office institutional to residential 18 to increase the entitlements to allow for multifamily, or more multifamily development than would typically be allowed under the current land use. I did take some slides of there to give you an idea of how the area looks today. This is the affected parcel, southern parcel. This is where the new multifamily units would be built based on the zoning that has been applied for, 24 units. And this is the existing 14 units to the north. It is also part of the project, and the applicant has indicated that these will be rehabbed, particularly new facade work to bring that up, to make it a unified project with the new development to the south, the new building to the south. This is 52nd Street looking north. To give you an idea of the character of the roadway, I would note particularly that there are pedestrian amenities on the Temple Terrace side, not so on the Tampa side, just to give you a general idea of how that facility looks today. Directly across from the, the existing multifamily units are two single-family homes. They do have a land use currently in the City of Tampa of residential 35, or allowing 35 units per acre. And this is directly across the street from the undeveloped parcel, which would be the new 24 units being proposed by the applicant, and it's the Pebble Woods Apartments, and has a Tampa land use of residential 50, or 50 units an acre. These are some existing offices to the south that have the same land use today as the applicant's property, which is the office institutional. And I would imagine this probably looks a little bit different now with Publix being redeveloped, but this shows you the close proximity of the Publix to the north on Fowler So this is the land use map as it stands today. You can see the crimson color of the office institutional. The, the area that is being affected by this plan amendment is surrounded by the black dash line. You can see the red commercial property that represents Publix to the north. The residential 35 across in Tampa is identified by the lighter brown, and the darker brown is the residential 50 that is allowed in the City of Tampa. And you can see the remaining of that block is the office institutional of the City of Temple Terrace. And if this plan amendment was approved by Temple Terrace City Council on January 7th, this would be how the map would change, allowing that land use category of residential 18. This was not in my presentation on August 6th, but based on some of the discussion, I thought it might be beneficial. It was in your packet. In particular, this is the existing land use of the area, with how those properties are being utilized today, as opposed to the future land use, or what would be allowed. These are the designations given to these uses by the property appraiser. You can see that the applicant's property has multifamily to the north of it, as I've shown you already, and a vacant, and the vacant parcel is shown in white. To the north is the light pink of the commercial for the Publix. Across the street, you see the bright yellow of the two homes that are in the City of Tampa, and the apartments are the brown multifamily to the south. As you go further south, you see a purple that represents a daycare in Temple Terrace. South of 113th Street in Tampa, you see single-family uses, detached single-family uses. On the Temple Terrace side, you see public, semi-public, and multifamily uses, and you have to go down to basically White Way Drive and south of that area before you start getting into single-family detached homes in the City of Temple Terrace. So what will be allowed if this plan amendment was approved? Currently, the existing entitlements allows 15 dwelling units, or about 37,000 square feet of office institutional. That would be modified to 30 dwelling units, or 26,000 square feet of office commercial uses if this plan amendment was approved. Also, this plan amendment meets the locational criteria for the business intensity zone overlay, and if the applicant meets the criteria for that in their zoning process, they could boost that 30 dwelling units up to 38. Our staff did review the Imagine 2040 Temple Terrace Conference of Plan for consistency. We looked for policies to both support and did not support this project, and we noted about two dozen goals, objectives, policies that we felt did support the project, so the predominance, preponderance of those, we felt aided and supported that application. And particularly dealing with issues such as neighborhood conservation, community development, multimodal quarters, and major activity centers, these goals, objectives, and policies are in your packets. Also, issues dealing with growth management, citywide redevelopment strategies, provision of public facilities, and housing. I did want to pull out about six policies and paraphrase those that I thought particularly aligned with the applicant's proposal, and I have these on the screen, and I've highlighted the, the key words, but the entire policy is, is on your screen. Land use policy 2.2, land use policy 2.2.2, multifamily mixed use and higher density residential uses shall be located adjacent to or in proximity to office and commercial activity centers. Land use policy 3.4.1, utilize incentives to promote the development of multifamily or mixed-use residential uses adjacent to existing commercial areas. Land use policy 3.4.2, multifamily and mixed-use residential uses will be located on major arterial or collector roads, proposed for man, mass transit routes, and in proximity to the city. on major arterial or collector roads, proposed for mantra, mass transit routes, and in proximity to major employment areas. Land use policy three point five point four, support proposals to convert non-residential properties along multimodal corridors to residential or mixed use residential uses. Land use policy four point one point one, maximize the proportion of residences, residences within a quarter mile of uses like schools, grocers, retailers, service providers, employment, public transportation, and other desirable community features. And finally, land use policy four point one point two, encourage transit-oriented development by encouraging higher density and compact infill development wherever feasible near public transportation facilities. We did present this to the Hillsborough County Planning Commission Board on June tenth, and they did find it consistent with the Imagine Two Thousand and Forty Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan, and I have already mentioned that we have a January seventh Temple Terrace public hearing to, for your consideration of final action on this plan amendment. And our staff recommendation is on January seventh, approve an ordinance adopting TT CPA nineteen oh one, consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine Two Thousand and Forty Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan. Mayor, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Also, I would note that the applicant and the applicant's agent is here who would also like to present.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. And ahead of that, I would ask if there are any members of the public that would like to address counsel on this item. Seeing none, if the applicant would like to present.
Good evening, council members. Mayor, so I just, I'm here for, to answer any questions or any additional comments you may have. You know, I presented on November nineteenth with regards to Ramila Luxury Apartments project, so if there's any additional questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them tonight.
Thank you. At this point, the public hearing is closed, and I would ask counsel if there are any questions.
I, I do have a question, Madam Mayor. For the planning commission folks, on your map that you showed, on your map that you showed on existing land uses and typical development in the area?
If, uh, the-
The one that was lit up, pink and blue and-
See if we can get back to that map.
Was that two or three? Which one are you looking at?
I think you're referring to the existing land use map.
Back up.
It just takes a second to back up to four. This map, I believe.
Yep. Okay, perfect. Scroll down just a little bit, please, if you can.
That's the whole map that is, that is available that I have clipped into there.
I'm just focused on that block for consistency. What does the pink represent?
The pink represents light commercial. The white represents vacant, and the brown represents multifamily.
Okay.
On the, and, and the lavender at the very bottom represents schools, but I, I looked that up, and it's actually representing a daycare.
Okay. And, and that, I just wanted to dovetail on my comments of the last meeting, and the reason I felt that this was inconsistent, based on facts, is that that whole block, for the most part, is commercial office, which is pink. That would be the only brown or multifamily project that's on that block.
Other than-
That's in the city of Temple Terrace.
Other than the applicant's property, which has those fourteen units.
Correct.
Yes.
So that's the position-
That is correct.
-that I took, and the facts speak for themselves, that that whole block is either pink or white, with the exception of the brown. So I don't see that as consistent, because the trend there is commercial office, it's not multifamily. So I'm not sure on how the, you know, and I, I participated with the planning commission for four years, so I, I do not see where one plus one equals two and get you to a multifamily status once the, basically, the bulk of the block is commercial office use. So I just wanted to put that on the record, based on the, the map that's in front of us, presented by the planning commission for the future comprehensive land use. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, counsel? Seeing none, if the clerk would please read title of ordinance fourteen eighty-six.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending the Imagine Two Thousand and Forty Temp, Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan, Future Land Use Map for One Parcel of Land Located South of Fowler Avenue and East of Fifty-second Street, consists of approximately one point seven two plus minus acres, by changing the future land use designation on said property from office institutional to residential eighteen for CPA nineteen oh one, providing for amendment to the official future land use map of the city, providing severability and effective date in repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
If the ordinance is acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading.
I move to approve the ordinance fourteen eighty-six, approving the comprehensive plan amendment for property located at one one four zero seven North Fifty-second Street.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign?
Nay.
Thank you. Motion carries. The ordinance will appear for a second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, January seventh, two thousand and twenty. Counsel business, is there any carryover business from our previous meeting, counsel? Moving on to new business, mayor's appointments. It's time for the annual appointments of city council members to serve as representatives on-
Madam Mayor, we do have some new business. I'll defer to Mr. Ross, who has some new business.
I can do it after, ma'am, so, that's why I didn't stop you.
The mayor, the mayor's appointments, you want to go with the mayor's appointments first? You want to bring this up? I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you, but- Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Carry on. It is time that city council members are appointed to serve as representatives of the city on various Hillsborough County boards. We'll be continuing appointments from two thousand and nineteen. The appointments will stand as follows. Metropolitan Planning Organization, Tampa Hillsborough Economic Development, and Council of Governments in Florida League of Cities will be your mayor. Metropolitan Planning Organization Alternate, Tourist Development Council, and Council of Governments will be Councilman Chalura. Board of Adjustment, Library Board, Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council will be Councilman Chambers. Suncoast League of Cities Affordable Housing Advisory Board will be Councilwoman Donahue. Hillsborough River Interlocal Planning Board, Municipal Code Enforcement Board, Riverwatch Task Force will be Councilman Ross. And Hillsborough County Regional Transit School Improvement Support Committee and Temple Terrace Audit Committee will be Councilman Schisler. Would entertain a motion confirming these appointments?
So move.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had an email a couple of weeks ago to all of us regarding what we call Main Street in the downtown redevelopment area, Fifty-Sixth and Bush. And we've, we've been calling it Main Street for a long time, but the time actually came for us to go approach the county with addresses, because the apartment building is about to be constructed, so that we have to get an address. And the county informed us, as you know, but the public doesn't know, the county informed us that we can't use Main Street. Main Street is already taken, probably more than once, is my hunch, so we're not allowed to use Main Street. And they said we have to name that road something else. I had a few discussions about that, and, and willing to have others, but if, if nobody is, would object to this, I would move that we name it Bertha Palmer Avenue, which we have talked to the county about, and obviously, there's no other Bertha Palmer Avenue, so that's, there's no conflict with that. I thought that perhaps it would be a nod to our history, and also rather non, shouldn't be very controversial, it's our history. So that's my motion, Madam Mayor, to rename it Bertha Palmer Avenue.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion.
If I could interject here, we can't use avenue.
I thought we-
It would be Bertha Palmer Street. The streets are running north and south, avenues are running east and west.
Okay, I thought the last email said avenue, that's ridiculous.
Well, I, I stand corrected by the county. The county said you can't use avenue. Actually, I was trying to name it Boulevard.
I know.
But they told me that Boulevard can't be used either because of the designation. There's specific designations for streets, avenues, lanes, and everything else.
Well, I'll amend my motion to read, to name the street Bertha Palmer Street.
Very good. And Councilwoman Donahue, still good with your second?
Still.
Very good. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. Any other new business?
I do have just a couple items. The Florida League of Cities had our first legislative update call yesterday, and some bad news are with regards to short-term rentals. Senate Bill eleven twenty-eight, with Manny Diaz as the sponsor, is proposing a preemption of licensing and inspection, with the proposal that at the local level, we will have no control and be able to do absolutely nothing. Everything will be going through DBPR. And on the phone call, one of the discussion points was, this is already a beleaguered agency. They're challenged with just keeping up with their mandated hotel and restaurant inspections, and as the League of Cities representative said, we're, we're pouring water into a sinking boat. So I would encourage any of our citizens who, and, and I know it very much pains our code enforcement and puts additional stress on them, as well as our police, who are trying to keep our, our city, so anyone who would be willing to reach out, again, it's SB eleven twenty-eight, the sponsor is Manny Diaz, and we can reach out. Another item that, this will be, I believe it was my fourth such conference call in a five-week span. House Bill forty-five thirty-three on cybersecurity is sponsored by Representative Anton. This is a very positive bill, because it is actually going through as an appropriations bill to make funds available to cities to upgrade our systems and our, and our security. This is absolutely a particular, particular interest. I mean, and I'm just asking fellow council members, do you have any idea on how many hack attacks have happened in Temple Terrace in just the last couple of months? And I will share, I didn't until a city department reached out to me and said, so, for the second time in, in a week, they're using your name. That came as a surprise to me, but when I expressed concern, it wasn't met with a level of concern. And in fact, I, I was kind of told it's no big deal. We don't really even keep track of these things. This is not the request that we've gotten from the League of Cities. The FBI is asking us to report and track these items. Just this past week, New Orleans was hit, Pensacola was hit. It's time we take this seriously. So I have two requests of council members, because I know none of us individually can direct staff. I would love to entertain a motion that we send a letter of support to our delegation to support House Bill forty-five thirty-three. And I'll pause there to see if there's any interest in us having, directing staff to, to draft that letter. We do have Representative McClure is the head of the Appropriations Committee, so I think to give a nod and say, we very much could use these resources and value these resources would be important. So I'll pause to see if there's any interest in a motion.
I, I have no problem making that motion or bringing it forward, unless there's other questions on that.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Council, Councilwoman Donahue, and then we'll go to Councilman Ross.
So I'm sorry, I was not on that call. What will the appropriation, how will it be handled for city?
It's just go, it's just going through now the different committees and being assigned, but it is absolutely to set funds in place that cities will be able to apply to for, for grants, be it to shore up, hey, we feel like we have, we feel we're at risk here, this is the hardware we need, this is the software we need, so it'll be for a variety of opportunities. It might even be, we need someone to come in and really do an audit to check our security. So it will take different looks to different cities based on where they are and what they need, but it will be a grant, and that would be my, yeah, next is that we want to make sure that we're in line and ready to do the ask, so that we absolutely have a very good indication of what we need.
Councilman Ross, and then we'll go to Councilman Schisler.
Yes, ma'am. And sometimes the timing may be unavoidable, but I, I'd like to read the, I mean, I'm not going to vote against it, because I'm going to take your, at your word, but I would have liked to have an opportunity to at least read the bill before we, it's one thing to get a summary, not that I don't trust your summary or anything, but reading it yourself, you know how I am, I got a lot of questions. I mean, where's the money coming from? What uses can it be funded for? What do we have in place now? Is this benefit, I mean, all those things, and, and so I'm not going to vote against it, but in the future, if we can even, even a few hours ahead of time, would be, would be appreciated.
Councilman Schisler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To, I'm, I'm in full support of this, and this is a question that I had raised, and I know Councilwoman Donahue had raised the same issue three months ago, four months ago, and our IT staff had responded in writing, and then again, made a presentation here to the specific issue about the number of hacks that are, that are going on. I have a relative that works in the government in, in another city, and he said that there's thousands of attacks, thousands of attacks a week. So I'm, I'm, while I think we need to do the audit, and I think that we need the help with this type of thing, I wouldn't want our public or ourselves to be under the misconception that we don't do, that we don't do anything. I mean, I, from what I gathered in my discussions with, with the IT people, it's pretty strict what we do. We're pretty, we're pretty comprehensive in, in the way that we manage the, the IT function and our susceptibility to the cyber attacks. So I would, while I'm in fa, I'm in favor of, and I think it's a great thing to do, I don't think we're just haphazard. I think we're doing, we're, we're, we're doing good so far. But we need to get better.
And I will share my, my concern, when it was my name that has twice been-
I understand, I understand.
What I was told is if I had a problem, city staff had just removed me from the server, and everything would be directed to my personal emails, which showed a lack of concern, secondarily showed they had no idea that the attack wasn't coming, of how the attack was being perpetrated. And I was very disappointed in the level of communication, and and, and just the tone that was set, that it really was no big deal. And it is a huge deal that, again, if I have sat on this many conference calls in a five-week period, it's a big deal, and we need to, we need to treat it as such.
Can we, we have, we have our new IT director here, who is not new to us. Do you want to address this issue at all, and tell us what we have in place? Our city manager, would you like to do that? I feel like we're letting people think that we're really not doing anything. I know, I know you have a concern, and I, I too, but when it was addressed before, presentation was made, that we had certain things in place, and that the employees had all been trained on what to open and what not to open, and basically, if there's a doubt, don't open it. And I, I know there, these people are professionals, so they all, I mean, you are, but I mean, the hackers are also apparently professionals. So I just, either one of you, I defer to you, Mr. Mayor.
Rather than call Sally up here cold here, let's give her a chance to kind of put her program together. I know that Mr. Keel was asked about a month ago, or six weeks ago, to come in, and we've had this discussion, and we've, we have given Bob the ability and the authority to do whatever else he needs to do, and I know that we were checking with an individual that could provide some, some additional backup. And let me, let me have a conversation with Sally and come back to you. And I shared with the mayor, two hours after you got attacked, I got an email to me from somebody, I don't know who. I mean, these things come in all the time. Says, my loan documents are ready to close, give us a call.
Yeah.
I don't, not trying to borrow money.
Yeah.
So this is the kind of stuff that happens, it gets into the system. The very best we can do is have the employees and council cognizant that if you get a strange email, don't open it, don't respond. So, you know, the, the, these, these emails do come into our system. I, I, I get them all the time. I mean, I get them all the time. And not that I don't take it seriously, but it's one of those things that, it is, it is somewhat unavoidable for these emails to be filtered out completely. There are, I probably get more junk mail than I do regular emails, so, and I'm sure that everybody else does as well. But if I can, let me, let me follow up with Sally on this other, this other company. I know that Bob had started talking to before he had left, and let us, let us bring you back an update on- And let us, let us bring you back an update on, on the conversations with that company. And certainly, we'll read House Bill 4533 and certainly encourage, I mean, whatever we can do, we do take that seriously. But I don't think that we want to give anyone the impression that we're not doing anything because I think we're fairly secure, but I can't guarantee that, and that would be silly of me to do. If I can have the ability to put something together, bring back to you at next council meeting.
Thank you. We have a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. City managers report. Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things here real quick. I was going to introduce Sally as our new IT director, but I guess that's kind of already been done. But welcome on board. I know everybody is happy to have her on board, and she brings a lot of knowledge, if you would, from just her experience here in Temple Terrace. But anyway, welcome. I'm glad to have her. The Temple Terrace Golf and Country Club tri-party agreement was received last week. We are still, we are reviewing it. Hopefully, we can get through that by the end of the week. And I just had a conversation with Jim Music over at the golf course this afternoon, that we'll kind of collaborate our efforts so that we go back to the district and talk about changes and whatnot one time. And we will do that coordinated with them. So, hopefully by the, again, we've got the holidays coming up, I'm not quite sure, but we are working on the agreement. I have read the agreement, have gone through the agreement, and Ms. Shon is now reviewing it as well. So, that's moving forward. And we'll see what the, what the changes bring us as far as the country club is concerned, but that is moving forward. To give you an update on the chamber, we had sent a draft agreement over to the chamber a couple of weeks ago, and we heard back from them today that they've got a couple of things that they want to talk to us about as far as things that are in the agreement. And hopefully, we can get that done by the end of the week and get that thing going. I had a, I had a couple of calls this, this week, and really just within the last couple of days, about the possibility of doing a lighted boat parade. I know that they had one Sunday, I believe it was. And I know that there's been some chatter on Facebook about the parade, so on and so forth. I talked briefly with Mr. Langfeld on whether or not we can put something like that together and encourage that a little bit more, and maybe do this as a city event here in the future. And I guess my, my request is, is just to kind of get some feel from council. If council wants, would like for us to pursue that, maybe kind of put something together, bring it back to you guys with a plan of some sort, that we can do a lighted boat parade that, I think, from what I heard from a couple of residents, that they would encourage us to get more involved with it. So, I think we used to do it years ago.
We did.
So...
Yes, when Winter Wonderland was at River Hills Park, we did a lighted boat parade. Hi. I don't control the volume, sir. Anyway, the lighted boat parade was a big part of River Hills Park, Winter Wonderland. And then when the venue changed to Woodmont and a golf course, obviously, we stopped doing that and we switched to the lighted golf cart parade. And just so you know, on that one, we had well over 40 carts, lighted carts in the lighted golf cart parade. But we, we used to have that for many years. The last year, though, was when there was a drought and only three boats could really launch.[1057.21][1057.21](laughing) And so, it was a short parade.
Yeah.
But it was nice. Just so you know, the three boats was the police boat, my boat, and one of the other city employee's boat, so that was there at that time.
Three kayaks, right.
Nobody else could get to River Hills Park.
Well, if the water's that low, we could use the golf carts on the river.
There you go. Right. But we've had that, and it is, it is beautiful from looking out at the water, at these boats.
Yeah, it is.
I guess, again, it's just one of those things that kind of came to my desk, and I thought I'd bring it to council, some interest in doing that, we can-
You would have to tie it into an event at either Fowler, the park at Fowler or River Hills Park.
At River Hills.
So, the public can come and see it.
Sure.
Oh, may I make a comment? You know, there are several things that the city just simply says, we'll partner with you. And this is a citizen-led event right now. So, let's not try to take on the event.
No.
Let's see what we can do to maybe say to people, hey, this is going on, starting here and ending here. And here are some places where you could go, rather than us having to, because I realize it's not that simple, but I mean, I think it's worth talking about. We have a whole year to talk about it.
I mean, you know, I just, I just got a thought. I mean, I'll bring it to council and see if you guys would like for me to pursue it. If there's no interest, I obviously won't do it, but we can certainly work with the organizers from this year's, who is a lady that I believe lives on Argyle, that, I mean, we could partner. I mean, we do this all the time.
Yeah.
I mean, Caroll's group's real good at putting this stuff together, and certainly, River Hills Park is a great setting to do.
I think partner with them and give some locations, River Hills Park. I don't know how far they go. I know they started their lineup at the Harney Canal, which is kind of in the center of our city, between the two parks.
Right.
But I don't know, and I don't know how far down or up river they went.
Well, if there's, again, if there's just kind of a nod, I'll kind of pursue it. We'll start having the conversation, and we can bring back some kind of program to council before next, before next Christmas.
Did you need a formal motion or just nods?
No, just kind of, everybody kind of nod.[1198.08][1198.08](laughing)
Yes.
Any nods this way?
No.
Okay.
We're good.
All right. We'll move, we'll check into it, and we'll try to put something together. Just to kind of give you a reminder of a couple of things here, the January 7th meeting, we have a joint workshop with MCEB, that is to discuss the liens.
I'll just remind you of something.
What's that?
Go ahead.
No?
I was trying to be subtle. Coloring book.
Oh, the coloring book? Well, that's why I gave you the crayons.
I know, but I don't read that the-
Last week, they gave you a new coloring book from the library, but we didn't give you any colors, so I figured it'd be a good Christmas present for everybody. But anyway, just to remind you, that meeting is at 5:00. We're trying to do that workshop. Again, that is a joint meeting with the code, the code board. And David, I don't know if anybody's reached out to you, but we will. Okay. The only, let's see. I want to take the opportunity, I know that next week, council had approved giving staff off Christmas Eve, and again, we thank you for that. I know that I've gotten a lot of, a lot of nods, see? That everybody is very thankful for giving us that day off. We certainly appreciate it, and I know that they work hard and they deserve it. With that, Madam Mayor, I'll turn it over to our city attorney, if she's got anything.
Madam Mayor, can I just ask one thing about the code push board? If the city clerk could send out a proposed agenda, would that be useful to members? Would that be helpful?
Thank you. I was going to talk about the Hanukkah.
Ms. Shon.
Thank you. Council has recently been updated on the lawsuit, City of Temple Terrace versus William Holland. This case has been going on since 2009, but it was suggested today, that today I do an update for the benefit of the public. And this started off as a code enforcement case. There was a code enforcement lien that was imposed that we then foreclosed upon. That, that lien had been running, the fine had been running for 778 days at the rate of $100 per day. So, the total then was $77,800. The property owner took a number of appeals, all of which were unsuccessful, and so then, since 2009 to the present, approximately $35,000 in interest accrued at varying rates throughout the years. We had received $50,000 in payment on that lien because the property owner had another piece of property that he wished to sell, and so, we gave a partial release so that that piece of property could be sold, but we received $50,000 at that time. However, the total sum that was then owed to the city is $264,124.01. There was a judgment then that was issued in favor of the city for that amount. However, in order to collect that, certain properties, other properties owned by the defendant needed to be sold, and the judge recently held a hearing on that and issued an order approving a sale date for these pieces of property that would then hopefully satisfy the city's total judgment. The sale date is March 6, 2020, at 10:00 a.m. There is the possibility, though, that the defendant can still appeal the judge's recent signing of the final judgment. However, that will probably require that a bond be posted, which would hopefully deter any further appeals in this case, and we're hoping that this will go smoothly to a sale in March. And that concludes my update on that particular case. If there's any questions, I'll be, I'll try to answer them.
Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Ms. Shon.
I do have a question. So, what happens if the, two scenarios. What happens if these parcels of lands sell, but they fail to bring enough revenue in to satisfy the whole lien? Is the lien quashed anyway?
That is our remedy here would be to, for the sale of these properties, if it fails to bring in the sufficient amount to satisfy it, in essence, we have that amount of money on the table already, and therefore, we're essentially bidding our total judgment amount. If no one else comes in and offers more, then the city would essentially get the property. We would own the property.
Okay. And the second question is, what, and this is less important, but what happens if there's excess funds?
The excess funds would go to the property owner.
That's what I assume. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? And does that conclude your report, Ms. Shon?
I have one other thing. Wait, did you, oh, okay. You look like you wanted to say something. Okay. I had one other thing. I would like to introduce to city council and to the citizens, our new deputy city attorney who's here, Mr. Ernie Mueller. If you'd like to stand up or...
Hi, welcome.
And I'm very happy to have him. Mr. Mueller was one of at least 10 applicants for the position. However, he was definitely the most qualified, having previously served as chief assistant city attorney for the city of Tampa. And he also was here advising our code enforcement board pursuant to an interlocal agreement with the city of Tampa. So, he's been here a number of times, actually, over the whole past year. So, he had become familiar with the city, and I'm, his office is on the second floor right now in the codes department. So, if anybody would like to meet him personally and welcome him, I'd invite you to do so. Thank you.
Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I failed to mention just a couple of things, if I can drop back here just a couple of minutes. The, this Sunday, the 22nd, if everyone remembers correctly, Rabbi Rifkin came into council and lit a menorah and started the celebration of Hanukkah. This year, they are doing the lighting again, but they have requested, instead of doing it at a council meeting, to start it, the first day of Hanukkah is the 22nd, which I believe is next Sunday. They will have a ceremony out here in front of city hall. We've made arrangements for him to do that in front of city hall. I think it's at 5:30. I think it's at 5:30. The other thing is, is just, again, this is very important, and I actually typed this in, I didn't read my written notes. January 6, before our next meeting, we have a ribbon cutting at Buddy Baseball. For those of you that haven't seen the improvements over there, come out and look at the improvements on what we've done. It is certainly a program that is near and dear to a bunch of us here, and the improvements that we've done over at that ball field are just phenomenal. But we do have the ribbon cutting. It starts very early in the morning. Charlie Belcher from Fox 13 is going to be out there to do a morning, a morning show. So, it ought to be something that, certainly encourage all of you to come out. It's really something to see. Thank you, ma'am.
Is there any other business to come before council? We are adjourned.